It's quiet in the church here. Welcome to the City of Rapid City Planning Commission, October 23rd, 2014 meeting. A few housekeeping items. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out a request form with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak and hand it to the secretary. Cell phones and electronic devices. At this time, we'd like to ask if any member of the audience has a cellphone or electronic device that you turn it off or turn the ringer to silence. If you need to take a call, please step out in the hallway so the meeting will not be disrupted. The consent calendar. Items one through six have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commissions are recommendations to the city's council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items: Item 2, 14 PD 032. Item 5, 14 UR 019. The Rapid City Planning Commission actions on these items are final unless any party appeals a decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Planning Commission and Development Services Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through six that staff would like removed from the consent calendar?
Item number two, please.
Thank you. Are there any items one through six planning commissioners would like removed from the consent calendar? Okay. Are there any items one through six that an audience member would like removed? The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendars, items one through six with the exception of item two and four. Items two and four.
Move to approve.
Is there...items...motion's been made and seconded. Two, accept items one, three, five, and six. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item two?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff pulled item two, which is a final plan development overlay to create single-family residential lots out at Alk's Crossing because Eric Braun is employed by Dream Design and he's indicated that he'll be abstaining from that vote.
Motion's been made and seconded. To approve item number two, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Karen's seconded the motion. Any opposed? Motion passed. Item number four?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. I read the annexation agreement. It deals mostly with the water, which I don't have a question about. But what does the annexation of that property with fire protection? I don't see anything in the water agreement. Is there sufficient flow? And will that become part of the city's response from the...I don't even know who handles the existing.
Right now, the existing...you're talking about the countryside component. I'm sorry because I was looking at something.
I'm sorry. I didn't identify it either.
The current fire protection is provided out there by Whispering Pines Volunteer Fire Department. And there is an existing water system in place that...I really don't know what the specifics are to that system, but I know that there is fire flows that are available in the area. Whether or not they meet the current criteria is probably pretty consistent with most other older subdivisions, so...but we would be absorbing that responsibility out there. I don't know if I answered your question or...
Well, I guess probably the entire annexation deals with the water. And the agreement is online, and I didn't find anything in there that...but it doesn't talk about police protection that we'll be providing. And on the fire side, it is a forested annexation, so we have fire and water flows and those kinds of things. Do we find those out after we annex? Or do we know that before we annex?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I am not an engineer and an attorney, but we worked on the annexation agreement quite extensively with Public Works. If you read the annexation agreement, there are many improvements that are going to be made to the water system as a result of this annexation that the city's going to do. I'm not...I think that Public Works' involvement makes me feel comfortable with the analysis that's been done on the suitability of the water system to handle, you know, what the city's going to need. I guess that's what I would say.
Thank you.
I don't have any follow-up, but Madam Chair.
Do you want to speak, sir?
Yeah.
Would you identify yourself?
Certainly. Rich Marsh from AE2S. I wrote the report that talked about the fire flows and did the analysis for that. So, as part of the annexation, we'll be connecting into the city's water system as well as...there's money that will go along to upsize the boosters in the Red Rocks Booster Station. So, when the system gets divided into two pressure systems to tie into the city's water system, an analysis was done to show that fire flows were improved in the Countryside Homeowners Association area with respect to fire flows and meeting the 1,500 gallons per minute criteria. So, yes is the answer to your question.
Thanks, Rich. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, just to respond in addition to some of the comments that Commissioner Brewer made, I do see that they'll be working with the fire department to initiate a wildfire mitigation plan so that we can reduce some of the fire risks in the area. In addition, the police department did review this application, and they indicated that they were in concurrence with providing the police protection that was needed. Obviously, we'll also be providing garbage services. So, wonderful discussion. There are costs to the city to provide those services. And certainly, the utility side of things is the most important issue and probably the one that promoted the neighborhood to seek the annexation in the first place. But the city's been working for some time now in improving the utilities to this area, and they'll be a benefactor of that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We're on the regular agenda items, and Eric is abstaining from this one. Item number seven?
Good morning. Item number seven is an application for 14 TI 001. This is an application to create a tax increment district and direct staff to prepare the project plan to develop housing near the South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. On August 18th, 2014, council authorized the inclusion of property acquisition as an eligible cost in the proposed tax increment district. On September 23rd, 2014, the Tax Increment Review Committee denied creating the proposed district, and the applicant has appealed the decision to this body as identified in the TIF guidelines. The presentation before you this morning will go over a description of the project location and construction concepts, a summary of the preliminary estimates for the increment revenue, a brief review of the amortization schedules that were attached with the packet, and an overview of the evaluation criteria that are set forth in the TIF guidelines. The action requested by the planning commission today is to decide if, based on the TIF guidelines, the project merits the creation of a new tax increment district. So, before you, on the screen is a boundary of the proposed tax increment district. The purpose of this project is to assist in the development of property located along East St. Joseph through the demolition of blighted property, the redevelopment of housing, and public infrastructure improvements. The TIF funds will be used for property acquisition, demolition, alley reconstruction, professional fees, financing interest, contingency, and necessary inconvenient costs. Here, you see a vicinity map. The project is located along East St. Joseph Street, bound on the east by Maple Avenue and on the west by Myrtle Avenue, and includes right-of-way for both the alleys and the streets. The property is currently comprised of seven blighted residential structures which are proposed to be demolished as part of the TIF project. Go through a series of photographs of the property here. This is 107 East St. Joe, 111, 115. If you're unable to see these at all, please let me know, and I can zoom in a little further. This is 125 East St. Joe, 611 Maple. The Rapid City Fire Department and the Rapid City Police Department have submitted a letter in support of the TIF project commenting on the blighted condition of the building and the high number of calls for service, as well as many incidences of graffiti and broken windows, and an overall threat to public safety. This graphic identifies the calls for service in and around the proposed TIF boundary during a three-year period from 2008...I'm sorry, 2011 through 2013. Calls for service included incidents such as 911, assault, burglary, noise, suspicious activity, theft, and others. Each red point on the screen here, in some cases, indicates multiple calls for service. This table shows which of those calls for service were citizen-initiated and which were officer-initiated. Overall, in the last three years, there's been approximately almost 16% increase in calls for service. And also included in your packet for review was letters from the Building Services Department recommending demolition and/or evacuation of two of the properties in this area. Staff went to visit the site a few weeks after the original application was submitted to document some of the changes that had occurred in the three weeks since the application was submitted. As you can see, there's increased vandalism and degradation to the property. Part of that was a result of police drill exercises that took place here, but as you can see, the property continues to decline. You see broken windows, pieces missing. We also took a walk through the back alley and documented the condition of the buildings from the rear. This is the location of the alley where the proposed improvements are. This is looking east to the previous TIF project. These are the conceptual elevations for the proposed TIF project that were submitted with the application. The north facing St. Joe Street is the top graphic, and the south on the bottom portion of the graphic. This shows a five-story building, the first floor of which will not be used for housing units, but for common areas and amenities for residents doing use. Here's the site plan submitted with the application. It shows amenity space, an office, recycling lobby, and as well as parking. This is the preliminary review that was created by staff or the TIF committee. It's a summary of the project using the information that was submitted by the applicant. And we use this document to identify the revenue, the estimated revenue from the tax increment that will be used to pay back the loan. If you still have any questions about the figures that are in this, just a brief overview. The document identifies the future value of the property after construction, which is estimated to be about $9.8 million, and the estimate for the current assessed valuation, which is about $491,000. The incremental revenue, then, is calculated by taking the estimated value at build-out, which was the $9.8 million, subtracting the base valuation, and multiplying that by the tax levy. So, for this point, we estimate the yearly tax revenue of about $194,000. Based on these estimates, the TIF would pay off in 11 years if the interest rate is 7.5 percent. The staff reviewed a variety of amortization schedules for this project. We looked at a 9% interest rate, a 7.5% interest rate, as well as a 6% interest rate, to capture a wide range of some of the amounts of payoff years. The amortization tables were attached in the packet. They're not legible on the screen here, so we won't go through them in fine detail. If you do have any questions, please let me know. As I said, at a 9% interest rate, the TIF is estimated to pay off in 13 years. At a 6% interest rate, it's estimated to pay off in 10 years. And the TIF has up to 20 years to pay off. As I mentioned before, the planning commission is to provide recommendations as to whether or not to create the TIF district based on the criteria and the guidelines. Submitted with the application was the checklist that includes state's requirements as well as local criteria. The applicant has indicated that the proposed project complies with all applicable statutory requirements, as well as the city's adopted tax increment policy. This checklist on the screen shows the one which was submitted with the application. Staff has reviewed the information provided by the applicant and has found the proposal to meet two of the six local criteria and three of the additional criteria, as well as two of the discretionary criteria. And a description of those was included in the staff report. One of the criteria used in the evaluation is whether the project site has displayed a recent pattern of declining real property assessments. This chart shows information from the Director of Equalization and indicates that the property has decreased in value from $758,700 in 2008 to the current $491,900 in 2013. That's about a 35% decrease in the past three years. Here, we have a graphic showing the city's current TIFs on the books today. The city, by requirement, cannot take on more than 10% of its total assessed value in TIFs. Currently, the city's at about 3.85 percent. Staff has reviewed the application against the TIF guidelines and recommends approving the request to create a tax increment district because it meets the criteria in the tax increment district policy. And it can take any questions from the applicant or from the planning commission.
Karen?
Thank you, Sarah. That was very complete. I want you to know that I support going forward with this tax increment district. I think that it meets the criteria. It's definitely blighted. I mean, anyone can look at that and see that. When this comes forward, I would like to see the performal looked at a little bit better. There's several different performers. I looked at all the different things that were...all the attachments that you had, and there's quite a few of them there, so...but if we could summarize that and have a better look at that performer, it just didn't quite make sense to me. Some of the performers, I know some of them were done by the applicant and some were done by staff, and they're not the same. And so, that would be very helpful when it comes to the final decision by the city council, and I think that would be an appropriate thing to do. Other than that, I think some of the questions that we would have, or I would have, would come after the actual project plan is completed. So, I just wanted to make that noted so that we can get that performer looked at. Thank you.
Steve?
Well, first of all, I want to make a correction for the Rapid City Journal. When it came to the TIF committee, I actually voted for it. I'll make the same comment that I made at that time, was that I have been on...I was in the city council for four years, and I've been on the planning commission for quite a while, and a lot of TIFs come before us. You know where Walmart is. You look above the hill up there, you got half a million-dollar houses up there, and that's called a blighted area. And that went through, and it's done very well. If you look at TIS in general, we...I believe Karen told me, we generated over a billion dollars since we started the programs. If you look at a TIF, this is a poster child right here. I mean, it's the only one that I think actually meets all the criteria. You've got homes that are blighted. You have high crime rates over there. The houses are dilapidated, and we're trying to do something for the community in that area. And that corridor between the School of Mines and the downtown, it would clean that up drastically. So, I mean, I can't see a TIF that's ever come before us that actually meets that criteria better than this one here. You saw where it went from $800,000 down to $400,000, so you have a declining tax base in addition to that. So, this will actually take and bring that tax base back up. We're going to have a building...I believe when it's done, I think it was going to be like a $9 million project after it's completed versus now where it's a dilapidated area. So, again, you know, my vote will be the same. And it was said that it was denied at TIF committee, which is incorrect. It was a three-to-three vote, so it died for lack of a fourth vote. We had one individual that wasn't able to attend. I believe if that person would have attended, it would have passed, and we wouldn't be sitting here right now. So, again, I support the project 100%. And again, I will vote for it as I did previously, so I'd like the Rapid City Journal to make that correction and get it correct this time. Thank you.
Karen?
I have trouble with that little button. I did have one other question. The appraisal...or not the appraisal, the value of the property today is $400,000 or right in there?
It's $491,000 is the estimated base valuation.
Right.
$491,900, excuse me.
Thank you. The county goes out and appraises the values for their tax purposes, and I'm not sure exactly if that's November 1st that they send that in. Would that go down even further, do you think? Does anybody know when that...Pat?
Karen, thank you. And I just...I wanted to speak to a couple of things because I know these are taped.
Would you say we know?
My name is Pat Hall. Excuse me. I'm one of the developers of this project. And Karen, some of these buildings that are assessed now, the answer is yes, it will go down lower because the city has demolition requests on them, and they will be demolished. Now, the only thing we're doing is waiting to complete the purchase. We have not bought the land, but we will be buying the land, and then we will demolish those buildings that have been condemned by the city. If that's done...whether it's done prior to November 1st or after November 1st, I can assure you, the Director of Equalization will know that they are condemned, and therefore, the value will have some effect. This property, if it stays like it is, is going to continue every year to go down in value. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I understand that that's what's going to happen. My question really was on the timing, because the county has to send their values to the state at a certain time.
That's correct.
And to have them at the lowest value, that would be a benefit to you and to paying back that TIF. And so, that's what I was questioning, and hopefully, you guys will look at that and find out what that date is and...
Well, you know and I know that it's effective as of November 1st. That's when...whatever that value of that property is of...of, excuse me, November 1st, determined by the Director of Equalization, that's what the taxes will be for the next year. And then, it's done. So, that will be the value of the taxes for 2015 that will be paid in '16.
Correct.
So, we don't know what the Director of Equalization is going to value that as of today. Neither do they. I'm just trying to tell you, as an owner of the property, I believe there will be. Whether that's a benefit, becomes a benefit for us or not, is not an issue in this. The reality is, that's what that property will be.
Correct.
Does that answer...and Karen, in addition to that, I would tell everybody that watches this program, and the city, and the staff, and everybody on your board, I know, and most of the people that do know you, know you are probably the best person and the most knowledgeable person, honestly and modestly to you, that's familiar with the TIF application. And we would invite you and would like to work with you to clear up some of these issues. Some staff has done the best presentation on this I've ever seen, and I think you kind of acknowledged that. And if we could solicit your professionalism to help us get...because there's questions that are somewhat in the political circle, trying the for's and against, that maybe you can neutralize both. And I would invite you to help us do that before we go to council. If we don't have your support, we're no longer talking about this project, as you folks know. Thank you. If you have any questions, Hanny or myself, we'll be happy to answer them. I think all of you will acknowledge that neither Hanny or I have been soliciting you, as we're not supposed to. But I'm aware that I know some of council has been giving you information to some of you, and if you have any questions on some of that, that is a negative, we want to answer that here today with you, because we need your support. I tell you from my standpoint, without this TIF project that we worked hard to put together to make our city better, this project will not go forward. I will promise you that, and I'll stick together on that. I will not be involved in...the risk on this is simply too great. And I would ask you to look at another project that was done like this, that was the project of the old meatpacking plant. I don't think there's a citizen in Rapid City. That was the same program used that we're talking about, that would drive through that area now and say that hasn't been a great accomplishment for Rapid City. But I call it the Adelstein Group. You may know that Stan has partners involved in that. And look at how long that's been there, and there's still lots of commercial lots that haven't been developed. But if the TIF isn't generated by taxes out there to pay for it, that comes out of the Stan Adelsteins Group. They pay that TIF off. There's no risk to the city. The same will be true on our project. This is so good for the Rapid City. The Adelstein Group never went through the scrutiny that this program is going through, and it's because there's undercurrents that are trying to imply that we're doing something wrong, and they don't have the knowledge. And I hope they have the fortitude to come out and talk about that Monday. But without your vote, we have no chance to go to the city council and discuss it. Thank you.
I would move for approval.
Anyone else wish to speak? Because I have some speaker request forms here. Ron?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Ron Buscarood, I'm here on behalf...I'm on the TIF committee also, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the Pennington County Commission, I want you to know. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Rollinger. I voted in favor of it also. And the reason I guess I'm here is, if you've read the papers before, I'm pretty adamant against TIFs. Never been a real supporter of them for a couple of reasons. One is, I think that they're overused and put on property that has no business having them because it's not blighted. And this, obviously, as we all know and can see from the picture, that's not even a question on this property. The other one is whether it would be built with the TIF or without the TIF. A lot of them probably would have been built without the TIF. I don't know. That's the unanswerable question, and I guess the way I look at it is you have to rely on the applicant and their word. I guess when Pat says it's not going to be built, I think you have to take that as it probably won't be built, and that would be a real shame for the City of Rapid City and for the School of Mines. Thank you.
Hanny, would you like to speak, sir?
Good morning, Madam Chair. I don't think I need to add anything. My partner, Ron, already covered all I needed to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say...oh, excuse me. Amanda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I ask a question of either Mr. Hall or Mr. Shanny?
Yes, please.
Thank you. And just to let you gentlemen know, looking at this, it seems to meet the criteria. I... I, I really can't find anything to argue why this TIF would not be a benefit to Rapid City. But as also, looking at this in view of the citizens that I represent as a city council member, I do have a blatant question that, I'm just trying to look at it from multiple views, which is what I try to do. And if I was sitting at home and I read this in the journal, and the property value is on a, and I'm estimating four, five hundred thousand dollars currently, but your purchase cost is eight hundred thousand, help me understand why the TIF should supply eight hundred thousand towards the purchase of the property and not the assessed value of approximately five hundred?
Yes, that's a very good question, Amanda. That property is assessed as residential property now. And different residential properties, when the assessor goes out, he doesn't know, is this being lived in by an owner, or is this being lived in by a tenant? So what he has to look at is this house that's there in terrible repairs. Okay? Now, you've heard the term slumlord. I'm not gonna go as far as to say that's the case here, but I can assure you, the people that are in that type of rental business look at the value of their property based on the return they're getting out of them for rents, not as single-family houses. So therefore, when we go to buy it from them, that seller is in a business of renting those properties, not homes for people to live in. He says, "This is the kind of return I'm making on this property. I am not gonna sell it to you for the assessed valuation, because if I sold it to you for the assessed valuation, I can't go out and buy something else and get the same return." It's a simple business decision for him. Hanny and I, and I'm proud to be associated with Mr. Shaffey on this, went out, the first series of buildings that we bought, if you look at that loan application, and I'm gonna speak in generalities, we paid close to twenty dollars a square foot because there were more, I'm gonna call them, uh, D or F type of rentals crammed into that area. So those sellers demanded a higher price for them because they were get, wanted that in money to go buy something else. And they were right in doing that. That's why, when I graduated from high school in nineteen sixty-four, a lot of us didn't go to the School of Mines because it was a bad hole then. It wasn't a safe place to be. So for fifty years, nobody bought it. You offered this program, and Hanny, Shaffey, and I said, "Let's do it." It's a risk, and it is a risk. There was no guarantees on that project. Now the School of Mines comes to us after we build it and says, "Hey, can we rent the buildings from you?" We had no idea that had happened when we started. And this building, we know for absolute certainty, as close as there is such a thing as absolute certainty, that the School of Mines is not gonna buy. We took that money and said, "Okay, let's go take another risk." That makes assessed valuation. The people that go out and assess those buildings look at them and say, "This is what it'll cost to build in today's market? And due to the care and condition of this building, this is what we assess it at." Has nothing to do with the income stream on it. Do you see what I'm saying? So i- if I could just add, and I'm sorry if I'm too lengthy, it's my tendency, but the fact is, Amanda, we bought this land for approximately eleven dollars a square foot. The other land, we paid twenty-five dollars, and we put that project together. We're not coming to you and saying, "This land is now worth twenty-five." The city gets the benefit of that, ten dollars or eleven dollars a square foot. We got that price because there was less concentration of renters paying too high a rent for the quality of the property, and the type of people that are in there don't care. That's why the fire department's always over there, that's why the police department is always over there. We're taking that out of the area. So the savings, and the owner of that property has a strong community relationship with the School of Mines. So they were willing to sell it to us for less than they would have gotten if they would have sold those as rental property. You know? Because they believe what this project is doing to Rapid. And believe it or not, I guess, we say, "We're passing that savings on to the city." And hopefully, that makes the TIF pay off sooner.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I'm just gonna go back and re-clarify and shorten this up because I think you answered the question in the first minute.
Thank you. My apologies.
That's okay. So the question was, help the public understand, or help me understand, why the assessed value would be five hundred thousand, and you need to, you need to include in this TIF eight hundred thousand dollars for the purchase cost?
Because that's...
And I, I understand what your answer to be, and just correct me if I'm wrong, is that the property being assessed by the county for taxation purposes may not include the business bottom-line decision of those properties being treated like rentals. Therefore, the purchase price is being evaluated differently than what the taxation value is. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, and I'll bet Mr. Brewer can shorten up my long-winded statement and verify that to be true, 'cause he dealt with it in the banking industry on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you. And then also, it just, uh, one other question, because I know I have already been asked this by some citizens up in Ward Four, even this is an old Ward Four project. If this, if this project, this is the question as posed to me, if this project is being now publicly vetted, and the current owner knows that city or taxation money, city money that will be, you know, paid back and stuff, but will be used to ra- or to purchase this land, are the prices, the purchase price locked in so that you don't have to renegotiate this purchase price?
Uh, the price, the original price is locked in, but we have to guarantee also, in addition to that original purchase price, rent losses. Okay? That, because if you noticed, as we said, the property has been vacated. We thought this process, if you remember the process that was used on the first TIF, right in the middle of vacating the property, some of the people that were on the council then said, "You can't put these people out in the middle of winter." You remember that? Amanda, maybe you weren't on the council at that time?
I don't, but, but I can see it.
Okay, so I'm trying to explain as briefly as I can. So we made a deal with the seller, "Hey, we'll give you this amount, we think it's gonna close during this period of time. We want you to vacate this property, so once this is approved, we can get in and start on this project, 'cause time is money." So now, time is going on because the TIF committee voted in a tie, so now we're here to see you. We have to keep reimbursing the seller, and if the time for closing goes out and they're not making income, the price continues to go up. But we've locked in a number with you, and we have to certify to the city as to the actual price we pay.
So is this price locked in to the city, then?
Yes, the price is... But what I'm trying to say, 'cause I'm not sure, when you say, "Is this price locked in?", I don't want something coming back and biting me in the backside. I'm telling you, it's locked in, but it does change. Every month, this is drug out. The price goes up because I have to reimburse them for their lost rent.
So, but that's a cost that you're incurring?
No, that's a cost of the property. The deal is simply...
Let, let me re-clarify. If this eight hundred thousand dollars for purchase price is locked into the TIF, any additional rent loss that you have to pay as this goes on is actually being incurred by the developer?
Absolutely.
That was my question.
Okay, but, uh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. But at the same point, if it's less than eight hundred, I pass that savings on to you. So if in my final price, it's less than eight hundred, I have to allocate eight hundred, but if I get to seven fifty or seven seventy-five, I don't come and ask you for the eight hundred. I ask you for what I actually end up paying. But I have to put a buffer in, because if I'm dealing with this six months from now, my price will be higher.
And thank you. And, and that's the clarification I was trying to get, is that we're looking at two different things, and it all depends on how you're viewing it, so...
And I just, oh, that's why I have mild success in what I do, because I wanna discuss it so that everybody clearly understands what I'm saying. It takes me a little longer to do that, and I apologize.
Well, that's not a problem. I just think sometimes, when you answer the question, you kinda hurt yourself if you keep going.
Yeah, well, the question is, you think I answered it, I happen to think I haven't yet.
All right, thank you. I yield the floor.
John?
Uh, just to follow up on, um, thank you, Madam Chair, just to follow up. All of us trying to make sure that our assessed valuation is just as low as it can possibly be. Fair, but low. Uh, and assessed valuation is not market price. So the difference between what you pay for it and what it's assessed, two different things. Assessed for taxes, market share for the owner's economic value. Thanks.
Karen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing that I was going to mention is, you talked about the time delay and, and how long it's gonna take. By our, us approving this motion today, we are approving the creation of the tax increment district, but the staff will then go back and do a project plan and bring that back before us. So there, that will be the next step, and I just wanted people to realize that this is not done from our standpoint, so, thank you.
The motion's made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passed? Any other items?
Thank you. Good job, too. Good job, thank you.
Other, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, excuse me.
Brett?
Sarah?
Brett?
Yes, item number nine is, um, just a update from the staff on some recommendate, recommended changes to the historic preservation. Um, the city contracted a gentleman named Jim Lee from Lee Planning to do an assessment of the city's historic preservation program in terms of customer service and program administration. Mr. Lee reviewed a series of background documents and state statutes, our local ordinances, some information about the history of our historic districts. He reviewed that and then came to visit Rapid City for about a, a week in May. He interviewed about twenty different stakeholders who were involved with current historic preservation processes, including members of the current commission, members of the historic sign board. Uh, he also spoke with representatives from the West Boulevard Neighborhood Association, representatives from the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO, as we call it. Um, he met with downtown business leaders who have gone through the historic preservation a number of times. So he was just trying to kinda capture a sense of how historic preservation is working in Rapid City. Then he looked at how other states, uh, how the communities across the state do historic preservation, and ended up making some recommendations for the city to consider in order to improve our customer service and our program. So, attached for you to review was his full study. It's about ninety-four pages. Um, it includes all of his background information and dependencies. It also includes the recommended ordinance that he wrote. We just wanted to bring this by you, kind of as a, as an update. We'd like for you just to acknowledge the report, and, um, we are going through the process of reviewing his recommendations and considering what steps should be taken next. Um, attached with the report was a, a staff memo that basically summarizes the major points within the report. We just kinda wanted to briefly go through those with you, um, just as a summary to his report. Um, overall, uh, one of the issues that he identified was that historic preservation policies and procedures are not incorporated into the city's municipal code. And he also found that, uh, though currently the Historic Preservation Commission reviews the interiors of commercial buildings, he found that's not standard practice across the state or really in other places across the country. So his recommendation is to terminate an agreement that we have with the state. This is the agreement that, um, kind of outlines the processes that we follow today because it's not adopted on our municipal code, and the processes that are in this, um, in this agreement will sort of give authority to the HPC to review the interiors of commercial buildings. So, and, um, letting this agreement dissolve, the agreement, um, actually terminate is, expires at the end of December. Um, letting this agreement dissolve then would require that the city just follow the process that's outlined in state law. It's called the eleven-point-one review process. And the city would be able to just follow that based on state law without the, having this agreement initiated. Paired with that, he's recommending that we codify historic preservation processes into the ordinance that's attached as an appendice, in the appendices. Um, and what this ordinance does is it creates two zoning overlay districts, one for the downtown commercial district and a separate one for the West Boulevard Residential District. Uh, the reason for creating two separate overlay districts are, are because he found that there's, um, different needs for the stakeholders in each of the two districts, and by having a separate zoning overlay district and then also a separate Historic Preservation Commission for each group, the needs of the stakeholders will be more adequately met. The stakeholders can be engaged in, um, providing recommendations to who serves on those boards, and they can be more involved in the, um, design criteria that, that they're being asked to follow. So yes, he's, he's recommending to reorg- reorganize them into two boards, and also that each board would review signs in their own district. Um, he recommended that we prepare and adopt sub-area plans for each of those districts to, um, clear, decide what types of goals and policies are necessary in that, um, in each district. And for downtown, he's recommending that the design criteria include a broader range of, um, a broader range of elements, which would include like parking, landscaping, signage, and, um, other, um, aspects of public design. Um, he found that the evaluation criteria and review processes for historic preservation are perceived as arbitrary, complex, and lengthy, and that a lack of local design guidelines creates vague standards that, to guide project planning and review. Um, he found that disinvestment and demolition by neglect are quite evident, um, in the districts. So his recommendation is to develop and adopt local design guidelines that are used, that are based on the Department of Interior Standards, to help improve customer service and encourage rehabilitation. Um, part of the recommendation would be to shift the process from where it currently is, is to allow staff to use these guidelines to approve certain projects which are limited in scope. Um, for example, if someone comes in today and they need a building permit to change their siding, change their windows, or change their roofing material, they have to go through the public hearing process. Their project is reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission, um, here in this room. Um, his recommendation is that for projects, um, that are more simple in nature, staff could take a look at that, they could run it by SHIPO if they had any questions, and they would be able to, um, provide that approval in a period of time that might be closer to three or four days, as opposed to the current two weeks that an applicant may have to wait now. Um, for projects that staff did not have the technical expertise to be able to gauge whether or not the project might have an adverse effect, we'd still run it by SHIPO, and they would be able to weigh in on whether or not it would adversely, um, have an impact to the historic property. Um, so his recommendation would be then that if, if, uh, uh, SHIPO did find that, then at that time, the HPC would review a project. Um, so, kinda to summarize, whereas today, the HPC reviews every project that comes through, um, if the city were to implement Mr. Lee's recommendations, the HPC would only review projects that SHIPO had determined had have a possibility for adverse effect. So we would, uh, expect this to reduce the caseload that the HPC has by, um, quite a substantial amount, and they could then, um, shift their efforts more towards outreach and education, um, which, which he also discusses in his report, and, and he found that there's room for, um, for improvement there, that they could develop awards programs, incentive programs, uh, grant facade rehabilitation programs, um, and, and just focus on education as opposed to their regulatory and policing roles. Uh, one of the recommendations in the report was that the members of the board are, be appointed by the Planning Commission. Uh, today, they're appointed by the mayor. Um, so he's recommending that the city take a look at that as a procedural change as well. So member, stakeholders in each district would, um, help find applicants to apply to be on the board, and they would be approved or made recommendation by the Planning Commission as opposed to the mayor. That's kind of, um, kind of an overall summary of what, the changes he's, he's looking at. Um, some of them have to do with changing our laws and our policies, and some of them just have to do with changing our procedures. So, um, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Karen?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, Sarah, I, I looked at the report and the staff report, and there's a couple of things that I do wanna, uh, mention. Uh, number one, um, I think that anything that we can do to improve historic preservation in our community and the relationship that we have with historic property owners and the boards and our, and the city, I, is a plus. I mean, we've looked at that for several years, and, and we know that that is a necessity. Um, we have gone through and, and put together a, uh, design guidelines. It did not get passed through at the final stages, which, uh, is fortunate or unfortunate because that was worked, we worked with the West Boulevard Association and, and, you know, homeowners to try to get that forward, and, and it got held up at the commission level. It wasn't the citizens that did that. Uh, we have had facade improvement grants and programs through that. We've had educational things that have gone through, but there, there seems to be a... We've had educational things that have gone through, but there seems to be a lack somewhere in the community of getting on board to really work with historic preservation. And I think the commission has been seen as a regulatory body, as you mentioned, rather than somebody that's trying to help and preserve our history, which is important for citizens who come to look at our community. And you go to another city, you don't want to just look at another mall. You really want to look at what creates that city and what makes that city important to the citizens who live there. So historic preservation is important. We have worked at the board level, getting the sign board. We have one sign board, one HPC board. And the sign board is really made up of people who are in that business. So when you combine the sign board with historic preservation, that's going to be not just a difference. You'll have to have some of the people who are in that industry to be on that historic preservation board. And whether you find that or not, I mean, right now the sign board is pretty easy. It kind of goes through and it does not go to the state level. So that's kind of an odd thing to look at. State never looks at signs. So the questions that I have are a couple. To put the processes under an ordinance form, it depends on how detailed you get, but you don't want something in your ordinance that down the road you go, well, that process didn't work and then you have to redo the ordinance. So I can understand trying to get some more input into the ordinance, but I would be cautious on how much detail you get into that ordinance. Right now, we get funding from the state for different things. The facade program was one, educational opportunities for the commission and the citizens, design guidelines, all those things. We had grants from the state. So I'm not sure if the state is still going to do that if you don't have the working relationship that you do now and the contract with the state or not. That would be one question. The other question would be the city, is the city willing to fund having, I'm assuming it's going to be you that's going to go forward and be that historic preservation officer, if you want to call it that. Are they going to be able to, be willing to give you the funds to have you further education on historic preservation? In the past, that's been something that the city has not done, is actually fund historic preservation. We've had staff people that have done it, but it's never been actually a position or funding mechanism. And so to have that funding mechanism to not only have you do more education, but the historic preservation members to have them follow up with more preservation issues. So there's some questions that I do have about changing. I think change is good and I think that's an important thing, but I just want to be cautious on how you go forward with this. And I also am not sure that as a Planning Commission member, I want to appoint that board, but you know, that, we'll look at that down the road too, I guess. But I think there's some things that we really need to look at. One other thing, the interior of the downtown businesses, we have, in my estimate, we have like one out of every 10 or even more, is very few downtown businesses that make a lot of changes to their buildings. I mean, they're kind of there. The things that we've looked at for interiors have been, do they have tin ceilings? And some of those historic artifacts that are important. And if you take that away totally, you could have real modern things on the inside and miss some of that historic part of that building, I think. So I'd be cautious on that, I guess, too. So that's my comments.
John.
Karen, I really appreciate your remarks because like TIFs, I'm not sure that at, from the city's level, anybody has dealt more with historic than you. So I have to respect some of the remarks, but I come at this from a different perspective entirely. And the recommendations are, I think fraught with problematic development of historic oversight at the expense of property owners. You mentioned, I think, Sarah, the neglect. And it is because property owners in many instances on West Boulevard and downtown, and I ran into this when I was doing the Destination Rapid City Development, is you can't get through the commission because of economics. And historic preservation doesn't count economics. It only counts historic. That's the federal law. And so to add layers of historic, whether it's our selection of the board or whether it's codifying, which scares me to death, I would have to say, this commission needs to have a full review of that recommendation before any discussion, in my view, would go before with a recommendation to council for codification of historic preservation. Even though other communities do it, it's been a real issue that we've dealt with before this commission with people on West Boulevard that bought property and then had to leave the property. They just couldn't afford to do the improvements thereby, the neglect in a wonderful historic district. And it's not that I don't believe in the historic districts, but I just, I've built banks in historic buildings and they go inside and, I'm sorry, it just shouldn't have happened. It shouldn't have happened. I think when the commission gets inside your building, that that's a trespass against the property owner. If not their economic rights, their property rights. So I would say that people want to live in historic districts. I'd love to live in a historic district. I just don't think I could deal with the oversight that communities put on with regard to the economic side or regulation of the property. I do agree with Karen that I, it's a little bit troublesome that this board would name people to committees. We're an appointed board, statutory. I would think the council would be the right organization if it wasn't the mayor, and I don't have any problem with the mayor making those suggestions. So I just say that as the community has a chance to take a look at this recommendation, I know it's full of observations and recommendations as other communities do it. But Karen started out saying anything we can do to improve it would help. I agree with that statement. I'm not sure, having kind of gone through this without discussion and understanding, that I agree with the recommendations for Rapid City. And I will tell you right now that codifying how we deal with it would be something that needs a lot of discussion, careful consideration by the public and those people that will be affected. So those are my comments. Thank you.
I would just like to make one comment, too, and then I'll give the floor to Steve. I really feel strongly that the Planning Commission should not be appointing people to this committee and/or to this type of committees. I don't think that's our role. And so I feel quite strongly about that and I agree with many of the comments already made, so I won't reiterate them. Steve.
I too agree with a lot with what John and Karen both have said. Karen, myself, and Amanda who's currently on the council, we sat there before. You turn something into an ordinance and it is a nightmare to make any changes to that. And Karen and I very well know this, I'm sure Amanda knows this as well. I think you walk very carefully when you look at those issues because once it's an ordinance, it is almost a nightmare to make any changes to that whatsoever. So I think as we go forward, we go forward very carefully and make sure that this group reviews everything along the way before we send anything to council. And I'll agree with what everybody else has said here. I don't think we're the board that should be appointing people to that position as well. Thank you.
So do we need a motion to acknowledge this report? Amanda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarah, I know you look like you wanted to comment on a couple of these comments and what I have heard from four different people up here now was totally the opposite of the way I understood what was coming forward. So would you like to take this opportunity to kind of clarify a few things? Because the way I understood that this was coming forward is that this was actually going to be more streamlining the process rather than delaying the process for the actual owners of historic property. And I thought that what was being presented in the recommendations was actually more beneficial to the historic property owners taking into account the economic side instead of just pure historic side.
Yes, what you've just described is the intention of the recommendations, to make it more streamlined, to make it easier for people. So I would like to clear up any questions that would imply otherwise because the goal of his processes were to make it more easy for people to go through the process, but not at the expense of historic preservation. So he's trying to find that balance between we still have adopted guidelines, they're based on the Department of Interior Standards, we still maintain the really great working relationship that we have with SHPO, but that we're not sending it to public hearing before the HPC in order to get the approval. So that's kind of just to address that big picture question you had about whether these are to make the process more streamlined for people or whether it's to give through law, preservation more teeth or to make it more difficult. That's not the intention. I can speak to the MOA that we have with the state. We've talked with them about this as being a possibility as a way to make the process more streamlined. Sioux Falls, for example, they don't send some of these more simple in scope projects to their commission. They have staff take a look at everything first and then they only send the bigger projects onto their commission. So SHPO has seen this, these recommended procedures as a model that's used in other places in South Dakota and they feel like this would help Rapid City improve our processes as well. They also have indicated that our CLG status, which is a program that gives us our grant funding, would not be impacted by changes to procedures such as this. So our funding and our ability to receive monies for outreach and education and training, none of that would go away as a result of changing our procedures around. I think that the goal in codifying the procedures is to make it more clear to everyone what the standards are and what the guidelines are and what the processes are. There's a lot of, you know, his observation was that it's seen as arbitrary and complex and confusing and that, so we're following certain standards or people are being expected to follow certain standards, but they're not sure what they are. And same within the process. We just feel like there's the sense that there's an overreach, that this volunteer board is somehow making design review decisions that they're not actually given authority to do. And so that's the intention in having the processes codified.
Thank you. And then also, Sarah, I just want to reiterate because again, I heard it from four of the commissioners up here. I'm hearing loud and clear, the Planning Commission does not want to appoint people to the different boards. So I'm just, I'm just re-saying it because it seems prevalent up here, unless there's any commissioner up here that feels differently. But I don't see anybody rushing to dispute what the four commissioners have already said.
And Brett, would you help me make sure I'm correct in that, and I may have left this out, and is it, they would be appointed, or I'm sorry, the recommendation would go through Planning Commission with final approval by council? Was his recommendation?
Yeah, and Carlos here, too, from the city attorney's office. And we looked at a number of different models as to how to appoint the board. And not only this board, but we also looked at some of the other boards, Air Quality and Board of Adjustment. We had discussions with the mayor on a better process than having the mayor appoint everyone to these various boards. And his idea was to have the Planning Commission make those appointments because you might be better at vetting the candidates. So there's a number of different ways to appoint board members. Staff could recommend to council. This board could recommend to council. The mayor could recommend to council. At the end of the day, the council is the ones who have to essentially officially bless those appointments. So that's what you might want to consider is, do you feel that you would want to have a role in appointing or making recommendations to the council who the board members are? That's what Mr. Lee's report was getting at.
John.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'll reiterate. I don't care how recommendations come to a statutory appointed committee, I believe that the mayor and council have made good appointment. I don't think people are too upset about that. So I understand where the recommendation came from, but, and I want to go back. This report, Sarah, if I hear you write, is not a presentation, but this is the ground that the staff would like to proceed with. They brought it forward as a staff item. I'm going to ask that it come back as an agenda item and a presentation. I know it's a long report, but I'd like to go through and have a discussion on not just those areas that recommended in the staff report, but I see two or three other sections in there, just going through it, that I'd like to really engage, public hearing discussion on. And the thing about codifying the law and the commission work is that I believe all of the people that are interested in historic preservation, for all the reasons that they're interested in it, are the people with passion and the people with persistence. They show up, they get on the board. The problem is, there are a lot of people that own property within those overlays that for one reason or another do not have that same passion. And they run up against some of those problems of appointed commissions going inside, making recommendations outside their authority. Codifying would change that. But as Steve mentioned earlier, boy, you codify that thing and then all of a sudden, that's the deal. Then you're looking for exceptions, you're looking for work that the city will have to do because, oh, unintended consequence of that codification rule, we got to change it because it doesn't work for us. So I would just ask, this come back as a discussion item and that we plan to take the time and go through this report. And then I'll end with the same thing. I think Karen, in her first sentence, was right. Anything we can do to improve what we've got, I'm for. I just know that for, as a banker, financing properties in these areas, I know people that walked away from options to purchase because it couldn't get past the historic commission. That's just wrong. And so I want to get it so that we preserve our historic districts, that they do what the original legislation intended. But I don't think it should intrude as much into people's property rights as it does. So my comments, said it twice. I'll shut up. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Karen.
Thank you. I just want to mention one thing. I think historic preservation, because of the few incidences that have come before the city council over the years and have been in the newspaper, have really put the commission and the property owners at an odds. And there's like a barrier there. And so anything we can do to educate people on both sides is important. I think of all the things that have come through the Historic Preservation Commission over the years that I worked with them, they were approved and it wasn't anything that was serious. The few things that have come through really come down to finances. And I think that's the number one problem that people see is they feel that historic preservation is going to make them keep their house exactly the way it is, no matter what happens and no matter what the cost. And that is something that even SHPO has always said, finances do come, that is part of it. So I think it's the public education. I know that the Historic Preservation Commission over the years have all agreed with that and they try to figure out ways to educate the public and be better at it. The design guidelines were set up originally when we started that was to educate the public, to say, here's the type of house you have, here's what's important about your house. Not everything, but some of the features that are important about your house. The Historic Preservation Commission has always, not all of them, but a lot of them have been fearful of the fact that people will do, as John mentioned, neglect or just do things without going through the commission and then that property no longer is historic and they'll lose that district in the long run. And that is a fear. You know, if people don't realize the importance of their property being historic and trying to preserve those things that are important on that property, then you end up not having a historic district in the long run. And that is something that citizens really don't want to have happen for our community. It just is not good for the tourist industry or anything else. I think that if I was in your position and previously I was, somebody comes to me and says, I want to do this, and I have the authority, I didn't feel that I had the education at that time to. at that time to make intelligent decisions and on some things, because I'm not a historic preservationist. I've never gone to school to do that. You know, I'm just a citizen, basically, that looks at the criteria and tries to find, find what's best. But without those design guidelines to help you, you're kind of at a loss. But then you also, it's an arbitrary thing, because a lot of times you come and there's a property that, that has, for instance, they have two-inch or three-inch or whatever the size siding. You can't buy that anymore unless you special order it, and that's really expensive. So that's something that you have to take into consideration. It's going to change the, the property, but, but, you know, you've got to look at the citizens and the cost to do that. But for you to be able to, to make those decisions, you need to have some kind of education to do that also. And I'm not trying to say that you don't, but it's, it's, it's something that, somebody's got to pay for that. Somebody's got to either send you to school or give you some more data so you feel comfortable making those decisions. And that, that's the cost that I was talking about. Is the city willing to do that? And if they're willing to do that, that's great. I think if, if you have that ability to shorten that up and say, here's, here's something that doesn't really need to go before a committee because it's pretty easy. And I've seen some of those that you hate to send them to historic preservation because it's, they're going to approve it. And if you can shorten those things up for the, for the citizens, that would be a big help. And so I see that as a plus. So there's a lot of things, and I agree with John. I think we need to really look at this and make sure that what you put into law is, is something that this, the citizens aren't going to come out in droves and say, excuse me, but what are you doing to me? You know, there's already that fear out there, and we don't need to make that any stronger. So good luck.
Steve?
I just want to make one more comment on the, you know, us appoint people. And the reason that I think it's wrong for us to do that is we're appointed. And if we do the vetting, then that doesn't go on to the council and to the mayor. They're, they are elected officials, so the public has some recourse. So let's say 20 people come to us and we send five on, that we've vetted these people out. To me, that's wrong, because again, there's no recourse to us, we're appointed. So I think it needs to stay with the council and the mayor, because again, public has access to them. Thank you.
Brett?
Yeah, just a couple of things. We talk about codification of historic preservation program. I, you know, at the very least, we're going to have to codify how the board is appointed and some of the basic things. Who, who can be on the board? What qualifications do they have? So you will see some codification come forward. And right now, in Title II, it's codified how those existing boards are set up. So we are going to have to tweak those. His recommendation is to put those ordinances in the zoning ordinance, which means it's going to come to you. And so you will see this. So, you know, at the very least, you'll see some codification taking place. I think when we get down to what Sarah will be doing for the city is, she's already been talking with SHPO about some basic standards that she can look at for very simple roofing, siding and window change outs. And I think she'll have a lot of confidence in looking at some of these very simple cases and being, being able to approve those. SHPO has agreed in this process, processes that if she feels uncomfortable with a siding change, and Karen, you had mentioned the differences in siding, she'll just call them. They are experts. And she can say, look, I, I'm not sure about this one, what do you think? And if they say, you know what, it's not a problem, then that gives her the confidence that she can go ahead and approve those permits. If SHPO says, you know what, I might need a little bit more information, then Sarah will send that information on to, on to SHPO. So she, they have her back on this. It's not going to be completely up to her to make a decision. She has experts that will be helping her with this. Then, of course, over the years, she'll be getting better and better at this, and she'll probably be making fewer phone calls. So I think the system as recommended will work a lot better. A lot of things just simply won't have to go through a formal hearing process anymore. Before I let you go, I think also, Sarah, if you could give them an update on next week's Main Streets program, that would be helpful. There might be a couple of items on there that they might want to attend.
Yes, absolutely. The city, along with Destination Rapid City, is hosting what we're calling a Main Street Summit Meeting. Destination Rapid City has looked at the Main Streets program, that's a partner with the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And they've, they're having someone from that organization come in to do an assessment of Rapid City to take a look at sort of where we are in downtown development and maybe what benefits there might be from, from starting a statewide Main Streets program. The statewide Main Street program would be technical resources to help communities across the state with, with economic development that's based on historic preservation in traditional, or in traditional business districts. So that's kind of the background scope on what the Main Streets program is. So what we've done is we've invited business owners and historic preservation commissions and different groups from across the state to come meet in Rapid City, to hear some presentations by these representatives from the National Trust. And people from SHPO actually will also be here giving presentations. So it's sort of one day of everyone, a group of people across the state coming together to look at what, what processes would need to happen in order to form the statewide program and how other states have done it. And they're just going to give us some feedback on what possibilities there might be for South Dakota to create this program. Iowa has a statewide Main Street program that South Dakota has looked at and is kind of interested in modeling. So we're just kind of looking at, you know, what, what that might look like for South Dakota, and downtown is a part of that as well as the city. See, there's, yeah, four presentations throughout the day. The first one will look at how you start a statewide Main Street program. Another one will be called investing in business on downtown, so something, paraphrasing a bit. SHPO in the afternoon will be giving presentations on what their role is in cultural preservation. And then they'll also be giving a presentation on the role of economic development in historic preservation. They're also doing a facade design workshop with people who are coming to take a look at, this is what the, the building looks like today and kind of what alterations you could make that would be in conformance with the Department of Interior Standards and how it might help the business owner kind of improve their curb appeal, so to say, and help their business and have it be compatible with historic preservation. That's taking place Thursday, the 30th, and Friday, the 31st. And I can send out more information on that if anyone's interested.
City Attorney, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess as an attorney, I'll speak about codification. Just to give you a scope of how this is covered currently in the municipal ordinances, there is, I couldn't estimate how many ordinances in our code reflect the processes that you all review and the criteria that are looked at, the staff time that looks at it, how it comes to you. There's innumerable ordinances that talk about that. In terms of the Historic Preservation Commission, there are ordinances about how they're elected, how long they serve, those types of ordinances. In terms of the processes, the criteria that they look at, there's nothing currently in the ordinance. And so when Jim Lee says that the process seems arbitrary, I think that's part of the piece that he was looking at, and that's part of the piece that, as staff, we're looking at. So I don't, I, I think that the, the ordinances, as they're, they're going to be proposed, will be vetted by this group, will be vetted by lots of people, and I think that's terrific. And, and that's important. And I will take, you know, what I've heard from some of the commission members about concerns about codification, we'll factor that in. But I just wanted to offer that perspective on, currently, there's, there's not a lot of guidance in terms of the ordinances, and I think that's part of what we're, we're looking at.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I understand there's already ordinance in place, but it has little to do with the decisioning on individual properties, and that's where owners and the commission get up. And I see where, you know, it could be helpful to have design standard. I just don't know. I'd like, I guess I'd like to see them before it runs through us and we don't have a discussion, and then it goes through council and we don't have a discussion, and adds to what Karen has described, that lack of peace and understanding and failure to educate the community with what historic preservation, their role should be. And once it's codified, it ends up in the hands of staff, which is probably a better decision than how we do it now. I'm not going to argue that point here. But I, I just know that in this process between staff and people in historic, their involvement in projecting this ought to include a wider community discussion. And if it ends up that we codify motion or information in Jim Lee's report, then I would like to do it with a full discussion. And so, once again, I hope this is going to be an agenda item, and that we'll commit the time and discussion, and that staff will be able to take some of that information in the determination of final action on this. It seems like, I've heard a couple of times from staff, we're already down the road, we're already talking to SHPO, we're already kind of moving along on that report. And I think that change deserves a community discussion and a public hearing before this board and the council. Thank you.
Sarah?
I might add, the Historic Preservation Commission and the Historic Sign Board perceived the same kind of overview and presentation and staff memo. And they've requested that we schedule sort of special work sessions, and we'll be doing that with them. So that's been offered up as something that maybe we can work with this group, too, as, as we take a look at what he recommended and start comparing that to what the community interests are and what's feasible in terms of state statutes, we can maybe use a special work session to kind of move through that process.
Any other questions? Sarah, thank you so much. I know I looked at the report, and I'm still a little overwhelmed with it. And so I would like a little more, a work session or something so that we can get some more information, because I was personally a little bit overwhelmed. So maybe I just need to read it another time. So anyway, thank you. Any other items? Motion's been made by John and seconded by Karen to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good night. Thank you.